Okay, all right, I'd like to welcome everyone to the September 6th meeting of the Long Meadow Clinic Board. This meeting is also being held on Zoom in a hybrid format in conjunction with the enforcement format that we have here this evening. I'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, Walter.
President.
Chris.
President.
Brian, Cheryl, President, and then we also have Karen Meissima, our Assistant Town Manager, and Jay Tellerman, our Town Council here. Um, the meeting is also being recorded through the Zoom platform. Okay, we'll go ahead and open with our minutes. Everyone have an opportunity to review the July 12 minutes?
I reviewed them all about the wisdom as it's been issued.
Okay, and were these the, I think these were the July 12 minutes that were amended.
Yeah.
From the meeting, okay.
Yeah.
All right, is there a motion? Oh, are you okay with them, Bruce?
Oh, but yes, no, no, I think yes, they were. Do you want to second, Bruce? Okay, I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Do a roll call vote, Walter.
Yes.
Brian?
I'm saying.
Oh, okay, thanks, Bruce.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Cheryl? Yes, okay, and then there is the August 16th meeting minute.
Uh, I have a, I think there's a title, but I'm not quite sure what it's supposed to be on the first page near the bottom, number H. It says, so you want to make some building, one of the unified projects years ago, where nowadays separate entities known as lots five and five?
Okay, there is a, um, it's right down here, H. I don't know which should be, oh.
That's it, I'm not sure what it's supposed to be, but that's it.
We're in person, first page down at the bottom, H.
Lots five and.
Um.
Yeah, I mean, we could just cross out the words noted, lots five and five, we just set maybe the analogy that separate entities.
Well, it's a lot of somebody's important.
Yeah, it's going to be the more than. Okay, so, um, eleven, lots four, and five. Any other suggested edits? Good catch, Bruce. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes from the August 16th meeting as amended?
Yep, some would.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, we'll go roll call vote, Walter.
Uh, yes, except.
Chris?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yeah.
Brian?
Yes.
Cheryl? Yes. Okay. Okay, all right, I'd like to invite, um, the applicant for the Long Meadow Veterinary Clinic, please, to present your sign application. Hello.
Angela DuBois?
Yes.
Can you just repeat your name and your address, please?
Uh, Angela DuBois, um, my home address is one of three Gates Ave in East Long Meadow.
Uh, I need to report this, I'm sorry, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Um, thank you, Angela. Walter, before we leave, I do just want to, um, just.
Yes, uh, this is case number, uh, two thousand twenty-three zero nine zero six dash one, uh, sign application permit. Um, and if you want a sign permit is complete.
Okay.
Um, or did I do the calculations of the sign area? It seems to be in conformity with the other signs about the location.
Okay, could we have a motion to accept the application as complete?
So, uh, the application is complete.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so.
Uh, I didn't, and then.
Walter, no, actually, Brian.
Oh, Brian did, thank you.
All right, roll call vote, Walter?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yeah.
Sign?
Yes.
Cheryl? Yes. Okay. You want to tell us a little bit about your sign, Angela?
Um, so our sign's a little bit of a, a hybrid of what our other practices are, um, as far as the circular logo is concerned. Um, so it's just the cat and the dog outline, um, but it's the same for all of our locations, just a little bit different. Um, but the blue and white is, um, is what we're going with, with this particular one, and we have gray. Um, we have blue and gray as well for our other, our other locations. So we wanted them to be, um, noticeably the same, so clients know if they're going between the different locations and it's the same. It's the same colors.
Are there any questions from the board about the sign?
Uh, just a, I mean, a question, what is the, in the circle, what has got an image out there?
Um, it's a cat, it should be a cat and a dog, um, uh, outline, I'm not looking. I have to pull up the, the, you know, this is my one, but it should be the cat and the dog, um, that you're looking at, like one's like a grayed out version, and the other one's like the outline of it.
And, oh, yeah, oh, okay, I got it, I got it. Really, right? Sorry, I had a question, are you associated with a, a new plant that's opening in West Springfield, it's gonna be twenty-four seven?
No, that's, that's owned by Veterinary Emergency Specialty Group, um, they have a location in, um, uh, Deerfield by Yankee Candle, and then they're opening a satellite, uh, clinic in West Springfield, I think by AAA, um, on that portion of the main drag. Um, and they will be taking on, um, a lot of the urgent care cases for this general area, because really, everybody's kind of stuck at this point between having to hike it to Deerfield or go to Windsor, um, for anybody that is in this area, so the go-to before was Boston Road, but Boston Road's been closed for, for several years, so now we'll have an urgent care practice in the, in the immediate vicinity, so people have to go forty-five minutes to an hour out to have their pet seen on an emergency basis.
Any other questions about the sign? Did you do the calculation on the side?
Uh, yes, um, we came up with a nice square three, so it's way under the primary sign, but it's within the building and probably been in there. I think there's that square footage thing, right, with the facade and all the lettings. No, the sign's fine.
Okay, Chris, do you have any questions? Yeah, okay, any motion to approve?
Yeah, I have a motion to accept, uh, planning board application, two thousand twenty-three zero nine zero six dash one, sign application, uh, for Long Meadow Veterinary Clinic LLC. Um, not at Williams Street, why is it?
At nine oh four Shaker Road.
Thank you, versus holding building, at nine oh four, uh, Shaker Road, plan is presented.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, all right, we'll do a roll call vote, Walter?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yeah.
Brian?
Yes.
Cheryl? Yes. Okay, thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, twenty days, notice of appeal, um, I will probably all follow up with Bruce, today being Wednesday, or I follow up on Sunday.
Okay. All right, uh, we'll move on to the site and design review for eight twenty-seven William Street. Walter, do you want to go ahead and read the legal notice into the record?
Um, I'd like to, or go with the ultimate, we have another, um. Oh, eight twenty-seven, no, was there a legal notice for that? No.
Oh, sorry, it's a, sorry, now this is the waiver of site and design review, my apologies.
Sorry, my.
Um, okay, are any applicants for eight twenty-seven William Street here? If you want to go ahead and come forward? Walter, will you introduce the case?
Yes, um, I do know it's, uh, case number two thousand twenty-three zero nine zero six dash two, it's an application for, um, eight twenty-seven William Street, um, and I believe this is a, a waiver of a, I believe a change in use, is that correct?
Yes.
And I don't have a name, any names of the applicants, if you would, I think they should present themselves.
You can go ahead and state your name and address, and they already signed in.
Okay, I'm Liz McKeernan, and this is Esther Hayes, we're both property managers for Colbrook Management.
Uh, okay.
And, um, we manage the Long Meadow Mall, um, across the street, and, uh, one of our locations, a former AT&T space right next to the meeting house, we are looking to change that back into a restaurant. Um, as you may recall, it was a restaurant, uh, for years when it was Simpkey Lab, and then it was changed to AT&T, and now we're looking to put a new restaurant in there, um, it is an Indian restaurant. So we're seeking a change of use back into a restaurant location.
Okay.
Walter, is the, um, application complete?
For the change of use, yes, the only thing is, obviously, I make a motion, um, on the condition of, uh, proper off-street parking by the CBA. Um, as far as I show here, it is complete.
Is there a motion to accept the waiver of site and design review, application is complete?
Sure, let's make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, um, any further discussion?
Who made the second? Uh, Brian, yeah.
All right, uh, Walter?
Me again?
Chris?
Yes.
Yes, 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 we'll get.
Cheryl, yeah, okay. Uh, any other questions about the waiver, and anything else that you'd like to share with us about the application or the restaurant?
The, um, restaurant is going to be run by, um, Bento Anthony, he's from Royal Spice Incorporated, and he plans to, um, call it Taj Indian Cuisine. Um, we do have, uh, four plenums, if you wanted, I think they were part of the application, um, so that you can see the design.
Most people are curious here, I mean, I'm a public insurer, I've walked along my residence, present here tonight, I'm curious about your restaurant, so you put a good advertising.
If we were to pass it around, that would be.
Sure.
Do you know, uh, roughly, when it's, right, you open?
Well, we don't have a date yet, since they have to get some construction inside facility, um, so we don't have a date for the, for the sitter.
Are there any changes outside?
No, no changes on the outside, it's only in the inside, um, they're relocating, uh, the bathrooms, and they're, um, also building a kitchen.
Mm-hmm.
That's true, I can prove that with, uh, some property manager being different, that there won't be no, uh, external change in property. Oh. Oh, there we have it.
The location, um, a little over seventeen hundred square feet, and it'll occupy the rest of the, the building.
What's the capacity of the restaurant?
We have here.
I may have just handed that over.
Well done.
Yes. It's around, um.
Sorry, I don't want to say it.
It's around twelve tables, um, we don't have a number yet, since we, um, the architect is still doing some, uh, reviewing.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think that's all coming down, well, you will have the numbers, I assume, by time you go to the CBA.
Exactly.
I think you mean on twentieth, maybe, is that the date?
Mm-hmm, the twentieth is not, on the design that's going around, it's thirty-five.
Okay.
When that was thirty-five plus three booths. I would say it's under fifty.
I had seriously gone to a second below. Come on, really? Big secrets. I don't think so. What, did you ever find it? No, no, we didn't, we were fine, so yeah, we're still, I know.
Any other question from the board?
No.
Walter, do you want to make a motion?
Of course, I'm dying in the spot here, I'll make a motion to accept the change of use, um, on the plan submitted, two thousand twenty-three zero nine zero six dash two, or, um, it is, um, I'm assuming eight twenty-seven William Street is the current address. Or eight twenty-seven William Street, but changing is from now business to, uh, restaurant. But our current.
Well, you have to cut it long and change the business.
Well, no, it's change of use, what's change of use, so the assembly or building. Yeah, what is it, it's from.
The town?
Business to.
The town.
Right? Yeah, okay. That is it, and I will say on the condition that they have, uh, uh, appropriate termination off-street parking by the CBA, meaning sometime later.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Okay, do a roll call vote, Walter?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yeah.
Brian?
Yes.
Cheryl? Yes. Okay, great, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you. Well, we'll look forward to seeing you back, I guess, when, when you have your sign, ready?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I'm fine. It works.
Okay, now, Walter, I'm allowing you to read the legal notice into the record.
Oh, for a public hearing?
Yes.
So we do have a public hearing tonight, this one was, um, posted, uh, it says August seventeenth, I will assume it also was posted on the following day, August twenty-fourth, and in a local publication, the reminder, I'm gonna ask that we waive the reading of this public hearing notice as it is being posted, I'll just remind you that it is relevant to a property, um, at nine sixteen William Street, and I want a zone change for residents on A one to business district, district, um, is that okay? Can we just, you want me to read the whole thing out of the record, or? Happy to read this, I'm happy to read this over and over again.
Okay, um, all right, so we'll do a motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Yes. I'll second it.
Okay, any other questions? All right, um, do a roll call vote, Walter?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yeah. Yes.
Brian? Cheryl? Yes, okay, I'll invite the applicant to come up.
Great.
Have you all signed in?
Yes, yes.
If you could go ahead and just state your name and your address.
Uh, I'm Jeffrey Roberts, I live at three seventy Inverness Lane, and I'm here as counsel to Colvest Long Meadow LLC, and I'll open the presentation here.
Okay, that's great, do you have any?
Yeah, I'm just wanting to discuss areas, everybody.
Yeah, 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 so, uh, with me is Frank Calacino, who currently lives in Southfield until he's finished building his house along that. And he's the, uh, the owner, the principal of Colvest himself, he founded the company years ago, and he's, it's his company here. Uh, and he's, of course, here to answer your questions about this development. And at the end is Chris Mallard, Chris Mallard is an architect with Phase Zero Design, and that's a architectural firm in Simsbury, Connecticut. Uh, but although it's in Simsbury, it's been very active in this area, and in fact, uh, as we'll mention again later, I think, um, Phase Zero and Chris and Matt Whitmer, uh, his partner, did the architectural work for the expansion of Long Meadow Shops, which is now the CBS with the satellite businesses next to it, so they're very familiar with the property, and they still do the architectural work for Long Meadow Shops, and they're doing it now, and the renovation is going on there right now.
Great.
Um, the parcel, as was stated in the notice, nine sixteen Long, uh, William Street, it's better known as a corner of William Street and Redford. And, and on that property is the, uh, former Christian Science Church, which is, hasn't been operating in many years. Uh, Colvest acquired the property in two thousand fifteen, and has, has held it, and, and has, and is looking to change the zone so they can do something local. Current zone, residence A one, uh, because based on the size, which is approximately three acres, and the zoning, uh, could accommodate perhaps three, three single-family residences. Uh, also, the zone permits, obviously, churches, because it has a church on it, it permits schools, uh, it permits, uh, other, uh, comprehensive permits, things from the state to put in different kinds of housing, um, as long as it fits in three acres, and for those comprehensive permits, sort of override the zone. Uh, we're looking to change the zone to business, uh, which is, uh, any use in a residential zone, but in this town has been retail, um, business offices, professional offices, and, um, the, the, the purpose of the zone change is to allow Colvest to build out, uh, those types of businesses on that property in a way that's consistent with and compatible with the existing Long Meadow Shops. The, uh, so who's Colvest? Colvest is, is an experienced developer, uh, the properties are built by Colvest and managed by Colvest. Uh, the, I mean, Colvest has built, uh, centers like this all over Western Mass and Connecticut, uh, I would suggest it has a very good reputation, it's worked with many cities and towns. Um, Frank Calacino has been very active in community affairs in, in Hamden County, Springfield, uh, there's a long list. I'm thinking of all, all the organizations for which he's called me for a contribution, uh, very, very involved, chairman of the board at AIC, the revolver Springfield Thunderbirds, involved with the Hall of Fame, probably the YMCA, many, many organizations, so he is a local businessman and a local developer, which I think speaks well for Long Meadow in this case. Um, Phase Zero, again, has experience in Long Meadow and with Long Meadow Shops. Uh, we're going, when I'm finished talking, I mean, I suggest we let Chris Mallard make, uh, an explanation of how this site we think could be developed if the, if the zone was changed, because the development has to operate within the business zone rules and what we know would be required on site and design review, so there's, you know, limited opportunities, and we want to show you what they are, what they would be. Um, we think this is a logical use of the property, hope you agree, uh, when I went to a town meeting two years ago, it was nine votes short of a two-thirds majority at the town meeting, so there are a lot of people who agree, uh, we think it can be developed without any disadvantages. Uh, it's a, it's a good location for these, for these expanded retail uses, it gives the, the citizens of Long Meadow more opportunity. It was interesting to see a sign permit for a, uh, veterinary clinic, and I thought, you know, everybody in this town owns on some kind of a pet or the other, why not have a veterinary clinic? There, there are uses that, um, that, that the property will be attractive, we think, to the kind of tenants that Frank would like to find, and, and he'll, I think he should, he's gonna speak to that himself. And, uh, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's good for the town from a revenue purpose, because it's new growth tax revenue. Uh, it's not, you know, it's sooner or later, it's gonna be developed, it's, it's developed in single-family housing compared to a retail development, the tax revenue would be five, maybe six times what we get out of three houses, between real estate taxes, meals taxes, uh, personal property taxes. So, we think, all in all, it's, it's logical, it's good for the town, we think a lot of people in town agree, you know, you agree, and I'll offer to Chris.
Excellent.
Chris, are there any visually, anything to put?
Yes, if you could please, um, pull up the key I shared earlier. If I stand at the screen, will the microphone still pick me up?
Sure, yeah, I'll just connect. Sorry, I have a lot of things on the way, I'm on screen, hold on a minute. Is that a good size, or would you like to make it bigger, if bigger, I, um, will stop sharing this band and open actually, yeah.
Yeah, I think this, this will work here.
Okay.
So, um, we've, we've got a few slides that kind of go through what the existing site looks like, and some conceptual concepts of how the, the site could be developed. What we're looking at right now is really just the existing conditions of the site, I just want to give everyone kind of a quick overview of what's, what's happening out there today, what it looks like, how the street is, is functioning. Um, along the bottom, south on the page, is William Street, and then vertical on the right of the page is Redfern. So right in the middle is the existing vacant church that's, uh, on the property today, there's a parking lot, uh, of course, that's right next to that parking lot, and then there's also two curb cuts, uh, directly south onto William Street. At the back of the property, there's some heavy vegetation, and then around, along the perimeter of the streets, there's some, uh, taller, uh, trees that, that stretch across the property. We can go to the, the next slide. So, this kind of, this slide gives us a quick overview of how that property is situated next to the adjacent Long Meadow. Um, the, the area that's bubbled in red is the proposed nineteen, nineteen sixteen William Street, and everything to the left of that is Long Meadow Shops, you can see site plan where CBS sits today, I know when CBS was developed years ago, that was, um, that underwent a zone change as well to develop that property, and since then, it's been, you know, highly successful, it's really just an extension of what Long Meadow Shops was. But this gives you a good massing, a view of massing of what Long Meadow Shops is, and, and what the proposed development will be, and I think it's important to see, because it's, it's really a natural extension of the shops that are there today into that property where the, the vacant church is, right up to the, the corner of William Street and Redfern. Next slide. The next two slides are some quick massing concepts to help us understand how big the building footprint would be, how much parking required for the amount of potential retail. Um, in both of these concepts, we utilize the existing curb cuts for William Street, uh, we didn't touch Redfern for any new curb cuts. Um, everything is contained within the, within the property and within the existing perimeter curb cuts that are there today. We've, there's two concepts, this one, which we broke the building up into three different segments, um, again, just kind of playing with conceptual ideas. Uh, the next slide, we'll see.
Let's see, before you, could you, what is the size of the, of three buildings?
Uh, in the middle.
Let's see, a square feet.
Sure, thirteen thousand square feet to the left, uh, six thousand five hundred, and forty-five hundred square feet. Those gonna be single units, or really be broken down into a more smaller? It, it's all depending on the, the ten, mix, um, that's certainly to be determined, and that's part of the reason why developing different conceptual layouts, uh, you know, obviously, at this time, there, it's, it's undefined, the, the footprint and shape of the building, these are really just conceptual massing to show that the site could work for a retail space. So, on the next sheet, we just have one large, uh, building, you know, pretty much where those three buildings are shown before, at three, thirty thousand square feet. The site concept here, other than the building, is all the same as the, the previous, um, you know, obviously, when moving forward, after, uh, assuming zone change happens, design review will work with a civil engineer, a landscape architect to really develop the site, make sure traffic flows well, make sure pedestrian traffic flows well. Um, you know, honestly, I think tonight, we just kind of want to. You know, honestly, I think tonight, we just kind of want to focus on conceptual idea of what could happen. And we have a, a bunch of renders. You know, we'll kind of scroll through these, I think, option A shows first. Again, these are just renderings that show what that front facade would look like. As mentioned, we're looking at a one-story building. But we've designed the building, designed the massing, so it does kind of appear as a, a two-story building to help break up that vertical facade that a lot of retail tenants like. We've also changed, we've changed the materials, changed the front facade elevation a lot. It's, it's important, I think, to the town to keep the kind of charm that the town has. To me, as an architect, it's certainly important to break up the massing. We don't want, we're not looking for like big box retail. It's, we're looking for high-end, high-quality retailers in here. So usually a little smaller, a little more quaint in, in size. Maybe scroll to the next slide.
So are those windows on the second floor, are they just front windows?
That's correct. The, the windows on the second floor are really there for decoration, depending on the height of the ceiling, the height of the structure, they could potentially allow light into the structure. Again, it's, it's all dependent on the tenant.
You're also concealing utilities behind those?
Absolutely.
So even if there's behind you, might not have any interference from the air conditioning units, ventilators, even restaurants on there.
Yeah, we, we would design air pits, screens to, to hide those, those units.
I'm just speculating.
Sure. And these facades are designed just based on those masses that we're looking at on the site plan. We have embedded out what each tenant really needs. You know, as, as we go down that road and each tenant interjects, they will, or what the structure heights they're looking for, we'll, we'll work that out. So, and this is option A, which option A, if you may recall, broke the buildings up into three pieces. So you'll see through these renderings, there's a, a divide between the two buildings there. Again, just trying to change the architecture across the facade of the building, so it's not one long continuous facade. Next slide. Another style of architecture that's mixed in there. We're going to add a gable roof, so you'll see there's clap roofs, gable roofs, clapboard siding, brick siding, just mixing up the, again, the, the materials, the structure to break down the massing. And this image is probably the most helpful. It really gives you a good street view of what that facade would look like in three separate pieces. And, you know, we were playing, again, with the idea, does the, the building massing look better as three individual buildings or as one continuous building? Option B really is just taking that architecture and combining it together and, and creating, again, different breaks in that architectural facade to reduce the massing. That's like one building. That's correct. And it's kind of hard to tell when you look at the site, site plan. You know, it's obviously undeveloped, but it's really just a rectangle. But when you come to these renderings, you can really see, we're not looking for a rectangle box. We're, we're looking to, to create some character, create space in front of the buildings, make it more pedestrian-friendly, introduce plantings. And you'll even see when we back out again to the street view, there's more plantings in the, the site, in the, in the parking area. Another view here of the continuous facade. The next slide. A, a view of the opposite end facing Redfern. Certainly, it's, it'd be our intention to create a one-sided building. We know that it's right on the corner. We want to make sure to design both the sides of the building facing Redfern and even facing the adjacent tenant CBS building. And then the last slide is, is really a compilation of option B, just showing the entire facade across that parking lot. We're, as, as Jeff said in, in Stormy Thunder, you know, we're, we're familiar with Long Meadow Shops. We've done a lot of architectural work out there. We've worked with that developer, creating, you know, unique new storefronts, creating storefronts that really break up the center, break up the massing. And we've been slowly, you know, integrating different architecture into that. So again, it's not one monotone style of architecture. You'll see that with Posto and those new restaurants currently under construction. CBS we did, which is, I don't even want to say how many years ago now. I'm trying, trying to remember, five, six years ago. But that obviously brought some of the character of that center over. And we, you know, manipulated that architecture a little bit to create some unique flair to it. And certainly what we would love to do here is, is create that unique flair and continue it throughout Long Meadow. I think it's an amazing town, you know, the, the charm and character certainly lends itself to some really beautiful architecture.
This isn't necessarily the architect. A couple of months ago, I think one of Brightwood Hardware moved, was anxious to move back into Long Meadow. And they were looking for basically thirteen thousand square feet. Which by coincidence, is a guy who did that, of your lab building. Have you had any contact with them or would you, or you might want to contact them or?
No, we haven't had any contact at all with them.
Or they're gone. Yeah, they, no, I know they're.
They're in fact, I can sense them.
Oh, really? How long ago? Literally a couple of months ago. Literally a couple of months ago, they wanted to move into Long Meadow. They were looking at, or actually contacted, they were, I mean, I think there were stories that they needed help. They were reaching into that, but it wasn't big enough.
Frank, in that same being, can you tell us a little bit about the tenants that you're hoping to attract to this space?
In their bills, right? In their rent. It, you know, that's what it all, you know, the majority of questions are what, what type of tenants? And, and I, I wish I could just tell you, okay, this is who we have. The, 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 the truth of the matter is that we don't know at this point. It's hard to, to talk to tenants, to consider a site that's not zoned properly. The type of tenants that we would like are high-end tenants. As you can see, the architecture, they're going to be expensive buildings to build. And because of that, the rent is going to be a little bit higher. So that is going to sort of restrict the types of tenants that come in to high-end tenants. And, and that's what we envision for Long Meadow, because, you know, we think that Long Meadow is, is a high-end town. And, and I think that, uh... You wanted this town, so I hope so. You actually are now a taxpayer. I've been a taxpayer for a long, long time. Yeah, but now you're actually residential taxpayer. So, but, but we, we, we've owned the property, as Jeff has said, since 2015. And as you, as you have seen since then, the property's always been kept up then. It's not, it's always been maintained. We even, even when the, when the, in the wintertime, when the guard that crosses the children calls us and says, "You didn't plow the driveway for my car to go." We have done that. So, so we, 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 we've done all those things.
But Long said Long Meadow Shops has a mix of professional offices, right? There's some physicians, a real estate office, and then they also have some retail space and restaurant space. Is your idea that you'd be looking to attract similar clients? Are you looking for only retail space? You know, what, what's your vision?
We're looking for a combination of retail and restaurants.
Okay.
And that's, and, and a high-end restaurant. We're not, we don't envision offices. We think that the, the, where it's located, our parking, our parking field is very convenient. It meets, it meets code for each one of those versions that, that you have seen. And what we, we presented a couple of versions, just to be flexible. Because a, a lot of, once we, if we're able to get the zone changed, then we can start talking and marketing the property to attract tenants. And then we can start really putting a site plan together and putting the nuts, nuts and bolts together to present. And, and, I mean, that's, that's what we're looking to do. So I, I, one thing, as Jeff said, we, we've developed throughout Connecticut, throughout Mass and Rhode Island. And we have, we've done high-end centered, Sable, Glastonbury, Northampton. And each, every town that we have developed in, we can go back. We, 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 we have good relations with, with, with the council, with the town government. If there ever an issue, they call us and take care of it. So that's the kind of relationship I want to have here. And since I'm going to be living here, I don't want to look at something that's not nice. It's, uh, because, and, and, and even though I don't live in Long Meadow currently, I know a lot of people in Long Meadow. And I can tell you that they're, they won't hesitate to call and say, hey, you gotta pick up the litter over there. So, so that's, you know, that's, uh, that's, that's, that's our, that's our vision for, for that property. Now, in this, in this process, we, we have sat down and we've talked to some of the butters. And we sat down with Kevin Cofflin, who owns a house across the street. And he was, he's, I don't know if you know Kevin Cofflin, but he's a, he's a great guy.
Kevin Cofflin?
Yeah, that's him. Yeah, yeah. And so he's, you know, he, he looked at, I sent him, went over what we were doing, and he said, "I have no problem with what you're doing." I sat down with Dino and Lisa Fasenti, the neighbors directly behind us on Redfern, went over the plan. They had some concerns, and the concerns were, one, that it wasn't a two-story building. And we assured them it was a one-story building. There's not going to be two stories there, there's nobody on. That's correct, that's right. Second, they are concerned about a curb cut on Redfern. We assured them that was not going to happen. And then thirdly, landscaped it. And what we did earlier this year, we had some trees that fell down, so between the two properties, we went over and, and just had an arborist look at the trees. And they were, they were, they were not healthy. And they were rotting from the inside. So there was about ten or twelve trees that were really in danger of falling over. We went over and took them down. And in, in addition, we replaced those with arborvitae. They're about six to eight feet high. And those are arborvitae, they grow at the rate of, you know, three feet or so a year. And we took the arborvitae all the way from where the trees were, all the way down to the street. So, so that the fascentes could have even more privacy. And so we, 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 you know, we took those steps just to make sure that we want to be welcomed in there.
What other questions do we have to report?
I would say I'm glad Phase Zero is working with them. They do great work. We have many, many site designer new plans that Phase Zero has been behind on, on their designs. But I credit you for that, like, you're a good operation. So regardless of what your tenants are, what the buildings look like, you know, they will fit in. That's my opinion, they know the drill here.
Chris, Chris, Frank, any question?
Yeah. Have you done any market research about these high-end stores drawing customers in here? Because they're not going to sustain themselves just on Long Meadow rest. I mean, we have, and we have, we have relations with, with a lot of different tenants. And, you know, I mean, when, when we, in, in, in certain regional meetings that we go to, we mention it. And they say, "Well, tell me when you're, tell me when it gets rezoned and we can talk." I'm afraid to mention anything, because if it doesn't happen, you're, you're, you're going to say, hey, you told me this was going to happen, and it didn't. You know, you know, prime example is something that just happened to the town just recently. So mention that. Okay. So, yeah, we know, we know, we know. So you're right, that's a good point. And we, we sort of backed on a little of a site plan preview, you know, based on ten, maybe it was coming back. So, you know, right, and I've come to that conclusion now. You can't ever back it on. You can't come in and say, I mean, CBS and Long Meadow Shops is unique. I think they're very unique, because they were dying to be there. They want to move, they're in a bad location in the mall, they're going to move, they're already there. And, you know, it took some manipulating. I mean, they had to convince another CBS, another part of Long Meadow, that they're going to stay and convince the town residents, you know. Again, you know, fail the first time, pass the second time. So, and yes, that was his strategy, that was the mall's strategy, to, you know, okay, CBS, and that's what we're going to do. To your point, Walter. Yeah. When that came up. Yeah. It was already known CBS was going to be there. It wasn't like, who do you think is going to be the tenant? No, they weren't, but I understand. Now, now we know, we know now that what Frank is saying is really, you know, he wants, he based on his reliability, his trust of stores and his, his ability to track, you know, obviously track tenants. He's not a fly-by-night landlord, which we might be seeing in some other part of Long Meadow. And that's an important aspect. So Frank has a reputation, he's got Phase Zero behind him, a good, a good, don't fire you, I'm what you say. And, you know, it's a different situation, so you got to understand this. You know, we don't, we can't just know who the future tenant's going to be of anywhere. I, I wasn't saying that. My point was, is that you want to get in high-end places. But are they going to want to move into here? Is there going to be enough market value? We don't think there are. We think there are. Okay, Long Meadow Shops has huge statistics. I think it's something like sixty percent of their, of, of the people that come to Long Meadow Shops are out of town. It's pretty hard to remember. Why do you order? Why do you order? Yeah. No, no, they know that. Why do you think gaps there are all the other ones? No, they know it's, um, we are a destination town now, and thank God. He will, he will actually thrive on what Long Meadow Shops are doing and across the street, because we have fine restaurants, we have good retail. He's not dumb, he's willing to go on that, and, and he would absolutely figure it out, make money and as rent, as a renter, as a, as a landlord. So I, I, I think that's the truth. The only thing we have to be concerned about is are there anybody out there that really hates this project? I mean, I've always been negative about the expansion of Long Meadow Shops. Even the CBS was scary, because I never liked commercial expanding in front of residential. And that was the first thing that happened with the CBS. It actually moved in front of a couple of houses on Liam Street. And that scared me. And people came to me and said, "Well, what do you think about what would happen, corner of Redfern and, and William Street?" And I said at the time, I said, "Well, I was just guessing, it's going to be a Walgreens." And I, I laughed, but I said, their, their motto is, "It's on the corner of happy and, happy and healthy." And I said it was going to be, it was going to be the corner of grumpy and, and miserable. Because I said I would, would fight that. But that's my only thing, so if, I don't see the public come up.
Well, I think we're going to hear from the public.
That's what I want to know, because that's my only thing. I, I, I've come around and said, "You know what? I sort of think it's time to do some of this property." And I have a feeling, as long as he owns it, he'll just dig in. He has, he has the resources. And Frank could be around thirty years and still be sitting on that useless property. He pays taxes, but you can put a church in there and then pay no taxes.
Any other questions or comments?
That's just my thoughts.
Chris? No? Chris? Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, if you want to, why don't you stay? And we'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak will tackle those who are here with us first in the room. And then we'll move on to the folks on Zoom. If you are on Zoom and you would like to speak, if you could just raise your hand, so we know we should call on you when we're done.
One reminder, just remember to tell the audience that they're asking you.
Yes, I will.
And not, I mean, don't direct questions to me.
Had it gotten there. Yeah, Walter said I will. So anyone, anyone who'd like to speak, if you'd like to come up and state your name and your address for the record. As Walter kindly indicated, I would ask that you direct all questions to me as the chair and I'll facilitate a response if there is one required. I also ask that all comments or questions do remain to our task and topic at hand tonight, which is the zone change from residence to business.
Hi, good evening. I am Annalisa Fasenti, 234 River Drive. I don't have any, like, questions. I have mostly comments and concerns as I am. 234 River Drive. We are the house is ground zero to the property.
Oh, okay.
So, um, I didn't come here with any slideshows, but I did come here with a lot of history. I've been in Long Meadow since 1977. So I welcome Mr. Colacchino to the neighborhood. I've been a taxpayer, um, for a very long time. So I feel like I am Long Meadow. I have been children's, um, you know, room moms, lunch moms. I've chaperoned the school field trips. I've looked for the dogs that are missing in the neighborhoods. I feel like I am Long Meadow and I feel like I have a lot to bring to this, this neighborhood and the new development that's going forward. Um, so again, I am the homeowner that is ground zero to the property behind 916 Williams Street, which is currently the first church of Christ's size. I did not purchase my home because I was unaware of the neighborhood. I purchased my home with my husband back in two, the year 2000. So we were ready to start a family. That's what we consider Long Meadow. We don't go there to go on the shop to eat and shop. We go there to raise our family for the high-end education, the first responders, and for the education that is above all. My parents still live in the house where I lived since 1977, where Envision Circle, which is literally two houses away. My husband and I had the opportunity to sit and address our worries with Mr. Frank Colacchino. Um, and continuing to be the good neighbor, uh, moving forward. Obviously the zone change and the design planning of the property to help understand the neighborhood and the direct impact this development is going to have for everyone on our property. At the last zone change meeting, at the DPW of guests, the vote did not pass. The neighborhood is speaking regardless of how minimal the vote was. We would like to see it to be residential as most of the homes are only about 2,000 to 2,200 square feet homes. But we do understand that zone change does happen. We do have concerns that we would like to address. Um, our major concern obviously would be, would be the inclusion of Redfern, which thankfully we were sure that that is no longer on the, the design plan. If you don't live in that neighborhood, I will let you know that that traffic in the morning, you will see the children riding their bikes to Blueberry. The middle schoolers on the way to Glenbrook and Williams and the new drivers on the way to the high school. Thankfully there is a crossing guard at the intersection to help guide all the children walking around the bikes or driving their way to school. Not to mention the heavy traffic late in the afternoon as well, when sports practice and games are in session. And don't forget those late night, early night footballs when everyone goes to cheer the Long Meadow Lancers. Those sidewalks are built. Probably the most important Redfern is also cut through for the first responders and ambulances. Fire trucks go to Converse to attend emergencies. We know this because we live there. Only if you actually live in this neighborhood, do you truly understand the development needs to be closely monitored to avoid unfortunate and unnecessary tragedy. Yes, that is true. Uh, we did have trees that Mr. Colacchino was kind enough to, um, have researched by arborists or treating bond or property. And it's like, and then it gets tend to. We're just trying to avoid a tragedy and then tend to. We would like to foresee things that, you know, in advance. So increasing traffic in a neighborhood that's already heavily trafficked, it needs to be closely monitored and be uns- like, you know, first, first and only priority. Yes, it will, the development will increase, you know, the funds, um, as far as money-wise, more than a home will. But sometimes it's not always about the money. It's safety and families as I feel what Long Meadow is, is about. Um, so, so please understand that this is a high traffic concerns. Um, the church did have no impact on the neighborhood as far as any traffic. There were no church bells, no weddings, there were no ferals. There was nothing that developed, that had any impact on traffic whatsoever in this neighborhood. We also were able to discuss the height of the building, bank plate. Again, uh, we are relieved that it is down to a one-story building with no access to visibility to our, literally our backyard. We have three children and privacy protection are our top priority and major concern. We are concerned about parking lights, lighting, probably landscaping, buffers between our two properties, and things like dumpster creases that clearly impact my family's quality of living and investment in our future value of our home. Even with the new redesign of traffic lights and possible widening intersection, we cannot be persuaded by aesthetics and how things appear. Smoke and mirrors and blinders need to be taken out and focused on the reality and safety of everyone, young and old. The residents of Long Meadow have not purchased a home for retail restaurants located in Long Meadow Shops. They are just a convenient bonus. We purchased our homes in Long Meadow for the cotton nod responders. Excellence and educations our children receive, the community that comes together in kind of need and a true investment in return of our home that we purchased and we decided to retire at one time for, to sell our property. Again, I repeat myself, uh, just close monitoring. We do have nothing but great faith in Mr. Colacchino's quality of work. That's not the issue at hand. We do believe he wants to be a good neighbor, but it is a heavy traffic neighborhood. And we would prefer, obviously, homes, but that property does need to be developed. And I guess if it does go to be zone changed, we're happy to work with Mr. Colacchino in addressing our, our concerns. And I don't think, um, all three acres need to be developed. We have a small little half acre, maybe more towards Long Meadow Shops. Everything else behind there is uphill. It's pine wood hills behind there. We are ground zero. We're asking for, you know, some consideration for the neighborhood and our safety and what goes with that.
Thank you for your comments. Fasenti, it sounds like a lot of your concerns, if the zone change is approved, will likely be discussed during a site and design review process. And so we would invite you to come back to the public area at that time.
But thank you so much for your time.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to come forward to speak? Sure. Can you go ahead and state your name and your address?
Sure. My name is William Fitzgerald. I live at 62 Fairway Drive. I've known Mr. Colacchino for many, many years. I'm familiar with many of his projects and I find him to be a recordable personal leader in his field and, um, very capable in producing, uh, quality developments. Um, I'm sure that, uh, planning and review process, if the zone change is approved, uh, it will move through that process and there will be a happy medium that will be found between the parts. Um, I also think that this is a, um, allowing this zone change is a very good, um, use of the property. And will generate new tax revenue for the town. And the town is in that need of new tax revenue. Those are my only comments.
Okay. Thank you. Sure. If you state your name and address?
Okay. 81 Green Meadow Drive, 32-year resident. I do not know Mr. Colacchino personally, but I know him by his performance and his reputation. As mentioned earlier, that church site has been maintained pristinely. I think we all should look at our own lawns and landscaping. Also, um, if you look at the retail site on Long Meadow Street near the Mollum Station, you look back a few years, that was pretty much abandoned. Mr. Colacchino bought that, refurbished the wall, which I believe actually the town might have owned, redid the driveway. There are three new retail stores in there now. There's a bakery opening. You know, small little retail, but patient investor. And I think once that little bakery opens, you're going to have a lot of happy citizens. I'll let others talk about his various locations, but I will tell you, he has a good reputation. Like I said, I don't know him personally. I know him by his reputation and shall we say his good deeds in the community that I've seen and witnessed. Um, last time this came for a vote, it was concerns about retail. Former select board chair, who no longer lives in Long Meadow. Concern was we're going to end up with a vacant building. Well, we end up with a vacant, brand-new building that gets turned over. The town will probably be very happy. But retail done right is thriving. It's not dead. You know, and you look at, you know, there may be controversy here. Well, look at the Young Mansion. I believe that was residential. That was somewhat of a difficult process. I think everyone's been very happy with what the outcome was there. There were local developers and they did a good job. You look at the CDS, as somebody mentioned earlier, that failed the first time. I think if you ask people, the shops are thriving. You can see it. That second CDS, um, has done well. Talked about what will go in. I've had a 42-year in corporate finance, including some real estate. You won't know until you get the zone changed and start negotiating leases. But you need to look at the reputation and what's been done in the past. And, you know, I think if, somebody doesn't want to go to Big Y in the afternoon and be criticized for doing a bad project. So, um, you know, that's where a lot of things will be hashed out at the end of the day. Um, so in conclusion, I think you got to look at the reputation, what's been done, even with the small little plaza on Long Meadow Street, but just what's been done on this site in the meantime. And, you know, it will be additional revenue for the town of Long Meadow. And I think if you talk to the majority of the people in Long Meadow, restaurants, retail, high-end, it's something that people here want. And I believe there's a need for it. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fasenti. Are there any other members here in person who wish to speak tonight? No? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to make a public comment? Like John Tomaszewski?
Sure. Yes. Uh, my name is John Tomaszewski, uh, 309 Frank Smith Road. I'm actually just a few houses down from that intersection of Williamson, Redfern. I just want to speak in favor of the proposed, uh, zone change. Excuse me. Um, when I moved here a few years ago with my family, we chose the location because we liked, uh, having the opportunity to walk to the shops and the restaurants right nearby. And, uh, obviously the town certainly could benefit from, you know, additional business and it's very limited opportunities. Uh, and I just think it makes sense to, uh, you know, extend that business district, you know, down into the corner there. I don't know the, I don't know the developer. Uh, obviously the last few people spoke has said nothing but great things about him. Uh, so I certainly see, uh, it being a pretty good development, um, moving forward. I think a lot of, maybe some of the concerns about traffic and whatnot can certainly be overcome. Uh, there's a lot of frontage on William Street. There, things can happen, uh, to sort of mitigate any sort of issues that might be, present themselves. But, uh, again, you know, as someone who might be directly impacted by this, uh, you know, in the years to come, I'm here, I'm planning on retiring and living here the rest of my life. So, uh, I would welcome the, the new shops and any potential restaurants. And, uh, so again, I'm in favor and, um, hopefully, hopefully this can go forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Tomaszewski. And it looks like we have Tyler Cerami who also has a comment or question. Could you say your, your full name?
Uh, Tyler Cerami, 61 Twin Hills Drive. I've lived in Long Meadow most of my life. I've got a couple of kids and a wife. We live on Twin Hills Drive. Um, I'm in support of this development. I think we've had a vacant property for a while now. And we have a developer with a proven track record and a stellar reputation that's going to hopefully put some retail in there. Um, I mean, I'm a little too transparent sometimes. I love Posto and Max Burger, but I could go for a couple of other options. Um, and I mean, quite candidly, I feel that 90% of other developers probably would be cutting the lawn at least every other week. And Frank has been on top of it every week, keeping that place spotless. Um, I don't see how we can't rezone this and allow some sort of development. Um, and for the price that the church demanded for the property, I don't see how it could fiscally make sense to put single-family houses there. Um, so that's all I have to say. I'm just very supportive of this.
Are there any other comments from the folks on Zoom? Any other comments from the folks here in the room? No? Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay. I had entertained a motion to close the public hearing.
Would like to close the public hearing. I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Any further discussion? Okay. Was there a roll call vote, Walter?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Bruce?
Yeah.
Cheryl? Yes. Does everyone feel like they can vote to make a recommendation for town meeting this evening?
I personally try. There's, uh, I don't turn up tonight.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead and make a motion, Walter?
Yeah, I have a motion to recommend, uh, the zone change for A1 to, uh, business for, um, what are you again? What's, if you address that?
916 Williams Street.
916 Williams Street.
Is there a second?
Go ahead.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay. Do you have a roll call vote, Walter?
We're discussing.
Do you think, does that you would have further discussion?
Well, I, I, I do think that the, well, again, there's no way of holding anyone to, to, to the presentation. Uh, you should know in a society's idea, we put in what we would want. Uh, but it, it does appear that it's a less intensive, or significantly less intensive, uh, development than what was thrown at us, uh, two years or two and a half years ago.
What was?
Excuse me?
It was the same plan.
No. Two years ago, it was, uh, there were any two-story building, not one-story. Uh, well, we're right. I mean, they were going to be two-story. Well, it's fixed by now. Which I, which I think is, is good.
Of course, it comes down to site design, right?
Well, yes, except, well, well, right now, I mean, everyone's thinking, oh, well, I'm really able to hold this. True. But, uh, if, if the zone change does pass, I, I, I somehow suspect that, uh, Attorney Roberts, uh, may, may have a, uh, a view of, 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 the site designer powers are like, somewhere west than, uh, I mean, people may be being told now. But I mean, it's not that they don't exist, but, uh, I'm, I'm a little bothered by the fact that, um, uh, everyone keeps talking about the high, the high end. I mean, there, I mean, there are a lot of very wealthy people in town. A lot of people, I think, we prefer to live in a gated community or it'll, it'll be a gated community, but it's not. There are a lot of people in town who are, are not particularly wealthy. It's really the older people and that. Uh, and I'm not sure that what would be going into this project particularly does much for them. But, uh, however, I, I, I do agree. It's, actually, I think everybody would agree on it two years ago. Uh, the property should be developed. Uh, the question is, you know, how? uh, that the property should be developed. Uh, the question is, you know, how? Uh, and I'm not sure that, um, you know, putting three houses in all of them would be the best, um, development. Uh, so I, I'm voting, it's not a giving, I'm voting yeah.
Okay.
Did you have a second, Walter?
There is a second. On the table, we're having a further discussion.
All right, so first and then, right?
We're having a discussion right now.
Who's content with you?
Um, is there any other, any other comments for this discussion portion? Corinne, did you have any comments?
Yeah.
All right. Your roll call vote?
Sure.
Walter?
Yes, I vote to, uh, uh, recommend to town meeting on number seven, that the zoning change can be made through the bill.
Chris? Yes?
Yes.
Brian?
Cheryl? Yes.
Okay, cool. If we're just seeing you at town meeting in a couple of minutes.
Thank you. The Attorney Roberts, he's wearing socks. He should have a curtain though. He's paying big money. Nobody deserves it. He wants to pay me enough. I didn't want it. Money for the developer. Thank you. I asked a question. Peter? Yes, definitely. Yeah, you betcha.
Yes, uh, well, it's coming to town meeting and, uh, they'll ask before what the planning board's recommendation was, so I'll stand up and say that the planning board recommended the zoning change. But there'll be a further discussion. Thank you. I don't know. I'm sorry.
Have you listened? Yeah, right. Jeff, I'm telling you, he wears socks.
No, I actually have one myself.
You know, he was a former select board member and he was on the planning board. Jeff, come on, Paul's on the planning board.
Uh, I probably went on, uh, probably was on the zoning board, like, maybe.
You said, right, no, you didn't. Was he on the planning board?
Yeah, I was on it. Bruce took my class.
Yeah. Was he wearing socks?
Yeah, something like that. Cause I did the zoning board for, I don't know, maybe five years, so maybe that got me to eighty. And I was, and I was on the select board for three years. That got me to maybe eighty-four, eighty-five.
Why, why did I have to be, Joe?
Okay, so I was on the planning board. I didn't stay for the whole three years.
But you didn't?
No, because half the time, somebody would come in and they were applying. And I said, I can't do this. And then I thought, this is crazy.
Bruce wants to come on, but after the scene down, Bruce, you love Bruce. Come on, he's down there.
Thanks, Joe. All right, so we're moving on to our next agenda item.
Merrill Walden?
Yes.
That's a good agenda.
Fun and exciting meeting today. Okay, then we have a proposed zoning bylaw amendment to zoning bylaw section three fifteen dash four with regard to definitions for off-site marijuana dispensary and registered marijuana dispensary. Corinne has, Walter, if you wanna get out on time, you need to.
No, I'm sorry, my, this is what my marijuana.
Oh, well, Corinne.
Let's say a smoker.
Corinne doesn't pull up for us.
Thank you, Bruce, because it really didn't suck it.
Great, I got it, Corinne, I got it. Um, all right, so this is what we talked about last time. Does anyone have any?
Yes.
Does anyone have any additional comments or proposed amendments? This is what we talked about last time.
So, make that a public hearing, then?
Yes. Uh, so we have to send it to the select board. Uh, and yes, we do have to have that.
So I'm gonna motion to accept more. Should I, or what?
Let's just see. Does anyone have any additional changes?
Well, I, I assume all we're doing is twice or eliminating words, not.
Yeah, not only that, it's no longer a keeping word. So apparently, our, our, our original, um, bylaw, that this came from the planning board's agreement, I think, before we got this, like, was more restrictive, actually, because we only said.
Well, the, the state changed its law.
Right, but it, it should have never said that anyway.
Well, that was what the state regulations were at the time. If the state has changed it, they have adopted it, so now they don't have to be, they don't have to be, uh, uh, non, non-for-profit corporations.
Right.
So it's, you know, I could basically just twice wear that. Apparently, it just occurs in the bylaw twice. So you just need to eliminate the words, and we're not for profit twice. So it's, you know, very simple.
So is everyone in agreement with this change?
Absolutely.
Okay, Walter, do you wanna go ahead and make a motion to send it to the, send the petition to the select board?
That's the order, the order of battle here. So we're gonna, I'm gonna recommend a decision to design change to the select board for their hopefully acceptance and, uh, sending back to us.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Is there any further discussion? Do you have a roll call vote, Walter?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yeah.
Brian?
Yes.
Cheryl? Yes. All right, and so.
Where is it in the, uh, the bylaw?
It's the definitions.
Well, I've got the definitions. This is in the zoning bylaws or the general bylaws?
Zoning bylaw definition.
Okay, well, I've got that in front of me. What is it, what word is being retired?
Off-site medical marijuana.
Oh, it's offsite. Okay, I got you.
And then the other one is registered, so down it.
Oh, okay. I, I, I got it.
Um, okay, so this will go to the select board. They'll send it back down to us and then we have to set the public hearing date.
Sounds nice.
We can set it for October fourth, or we can set it for November first, which is right before the, um,
Maybe I'll fill it for it.
Okay. All right, so, okay, I'll make a motion.
We meet at, we meet at day anyway, so, yeah, so Brian would be, I mean, we have to hold it up.
The, the next select board meeting is the twenty-eighth of February.
Oh, that's correct. Yes, that's correct. So how do we talk about this in the difference? So we recommend it to the select board, but we're gonna have to publish
Yeah.
notices prior to
Yes.
them actually accepting it. So it's a waste of advertising if they actually do not want to put on a warrant.
Uh, no, it's nondiscretionary that they, um, send it back to the planning board, so either way, we're put forward, move forwards, as though it will be.
The waste of the warrant is different. Right, so we advertise the site not to put on a poll down meeting.
I think you can. But you can still use.
Next town meeting, we'll have that on another public hearing. You would still be able to use it, I believe. I don't think so. I think a little bit more.
I haven't, I haven't seen anything about that when I've been doing research for those own changes we've been doing. I think you should use this, the same.
You know how many Warner Earls are already, we have a.
It was like, I, no, I don't know. Mike, Mike Barker, he can chart it out.
So, thank you, I'm sorry, that's your fault.
I mean, I wouldn't think this is gonna take any time at the town meeting, because, I mean, against state law.
Well, little state law overrides our law anyways, so.
Seven dollars. I mean, it's just a matter of putting it in compliance with state law.
Okay, so.
So are we comfortable with setting the public hearing for October fourth?
Yes.
Okay. Yep, so I'll make a motion to set the public hearing on the proposed zoning bylaw amendment for October fourth. Is there a second?
Second that, with the, with the notion that we will have to have a notice sooner than, what was it? Uh, September eighteenth, or? Corinne, something like that, yeah.
Something like that. I will do that.
Corinne knows, yeah, she knows, girl. Okay, thank you, Corinne.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, will do a roll call vote, Walter?
Uh, yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yeah.
Brian?
Yes.
Cheryl? Yes. Jay, is a roll call vote necessary when we're doing the hybrid format?
Yes.
Okay, just confirming. Just confirming, okay.
Thank you. No, it isn't becoming, it's like second nature now. It's, you know.
Actually, just, we're, we're gonna, if the next select board meeting is the twenty-eighth of September.
Yes.
So we'll have to be running our, uh, for the selectors.
No, no, that's what we were talking about.
No, you're right, you don't have to.
Yeah, oh, yes, I mean, they, they don't, they, we're, we're running them with October fourth being the date.
No, 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 I understand. I just, I mean, I can't believe the select board would say no, but. No, but that is downside. They could not put on the warrant for, uh, special.
But they, they cannot say no to referring it back to the board for the public hearing. So it's a formality.
So they could, they could take it off the warrant though for the fall coming. And my math. Uh, no, no, December.
The spring will be, will be more than six months.
Right, we have to, like, hold a hearing, see if it's.
Okay, I mean, okay. All right, so we'll set it for October fourth. Well, is the November first date still beyond six months?
Oh, hold on, that's a good question. December, January, February, March, April, and May?
It would be November first. It's usually late May.
I think beyond that, no. We're, we're going out to ask.
It's usually late April or, like, to, to mid-May.
Yeah, no, we've missed that, you're right.
Yeah, in, in the beginning of April fourth would be six months after, after October fourth.
No, no, we're talking about, we had a November, we could have a, a November meeting for a regular town meeting.
Oh, I see, I see what you mean.
But I think it's still, it's six months or more.
If it's in late April, though, six months isn't until May first. The springtime, I mean, we could just do it in November first, just so we don't have to have another public hearing. I, I don't, uh, I, I know that this is playing just in the case that, but I don't see why the select board would not put this on the warrant. It's, it's, um, as Bruce pointed out, it's very small compared to some other. Okay, so let's.
No, I don't think so. I think we'll be safe with that.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
Fingers crossed.
Um.
I love terms, somebody.
All right, now, back to my favorite discussion, the updates to the planning board rules and regulations.
Do you have? Yeah, I have.
So Corinne. Okay, so Corinne has it up. And so you might recall, last time, we left off, and this is really what we have to get through tonight, how we're going to accept applications. Are we going to accept them through the town clerk? Or are we going to accept them at a regular meeting? And it, whatever we decide, because we have a lot of things going on now in terms of how we accept the application, so we need to decide what we're going to do and stick with it.
Only ask town council, because he represents other, other entities, other towns, and I think the way we've always done it is, um, and I, and here's the thing, we have actual litigation on this. We were forced, um, in a lawsuit by private gas stations.
Hey, Walter, sorry to interrupt you, but before we get it, so just to be clear, right now, our, our rules and regulations indicate that we accept it at a regularly scheduled.
All applications.
All applications. Our proposing, or what we've discussed anyway, is that we accept all applications with, I learned, um, the exception of subdivision applications, um.
By court or?
The subdivision rule, or the subdivision rules and regulations indicate that a subdivision application has to be accepted at actually a meeting.
It does.
For mail, right?
Really, that, that isn't by court? See, that's what I thought was weird.
But so, our proposal is that we accept all other applications outside of the, let me know if I'm going off the base here, other than the subdivision applications through the town clerk. That's what we've been talking about.
We, we, we settled litigation. You can look at the case. We were sued and it settled in, in court. We had, we had to do that. It was, it was settled in court, right, Bruce? We had to accept it at a regular meeting. That was a private case against us. That's why we amended our rules and regulations. It's why it said what it says. It was by court. We didn't do that by, just what we felt like did matter. It's a court. And you can look at the case, uh, um, it was, uh, remanded back to us as a planning board to make sure. I don't, I don't have the case, obviously, but your, your zoning bylaw per site and design review Yeah. says at a meeting.
Right.
That's all it says. It says that a copy goes to the town clerk. So whatever you decide, Corinne and I talked about this today, you're gonna have to sync the two up. If you wanna change practice with site and design review, so that it's just submitted to the town clerk, which would be more typical practice than, it would be much more typical practice. It would follow more like special permits and variances. Then you're gonna have to change the zoning bylaw too, because the zoning bylaw itself specifies subdivisions are different. They can be received either at a meeting, but also be submitted to, um, by certified mail.
Jay, would it be easier just to eliminate references to how applications are accepted in the zoning bylaw and we just have it in our
Corinne and I spoke about that today. It makes so much more sense. And, yeah, our recommendation is always keep fees and as much as I can keep up out and put that all in regulations. And some of it doesn't even have to go in regulations, because a fee is a fee. And a, and a procedure is a procedure.
One, one of the possible problems with, with having them filed with the court when we're at our meeting is, um, this, uh, site design review, that the, the clock starts ticking when it's filed.
Does it?
Would that be true? Well, it, it is in our.
Well, no, what does he say?
What, I mean, is there any way? Well, he have to hold a public hearing the next number of days.
Well, subdivision is just pretty. Site design, I, I think I, I took a quick look at it and I don't recall exactly. It had a pretty generous time frame.
Sixty-five days or?
Yeah, it wasn't.
Which is in alignment with the Mass General law special permit.
Yeah.
It's like, it's for me.
Hold the hearing, but it's the guy who's, uh, well, it's in state law, yeah.
They, so, so, th- this is what I talked with, with previous town, town council. There, there is not. So you, you have a lot of leeway in how you set it up, but many, if not most, maybe this group could corroborate or dispel. Communities in Massachusetts set it up to follow the same process as the special permit, because that's something that is easily, it's, it's all laid out and it's, um, easy to replicate the process versus make something up and, and defend it, essentially.
Well, we, we, I would have, uh, elected planning board versus appointed planning board of a system of court except, like, so it's in time, you know, the, the town clerk? Yeah, almost all. It's very unusual for that not to be, and to, to Corinne's point, to get back to that, there can be all kinds of different things with site plan, but we, we definitely like to, if, sometimes site plan comes along with a special permit for the same project, so we wanna sync those up anyway, so that there's not a miss. So it's easy to go just follow special permits, closing hearing, whatever. Sometimes a town will have a light site plan process, so major and minor. So you might have something with a smaller time frame. But, yeah, you wanna go with something recognized. You're not keeping too, trying to keep two sets of deadlines in your head and maybe missing one and having a constructive approval uh, result from that, so.
May I speak to Bruce, please? So this is just, you might remember this perfectly, Bruce, but just to remind everybody that, um, Bianca and I sat down for a good amount of time and tried to backtrack um, exactly how many days ahead of time we would want to request applications be due to the clerk compared to a regularly scheduled planning board meeting to ensure that there was still lots of wiggle room to meet that timeline. And so what's, what's in the, the current proposals, that recognizing that these are my proposals and you aren't discussing them, they're not your proposals, um, is that for site and design review, so reflective of that sixty-five day, uh, uh, timeline. Yeah, for a public hearing. The town clerk, um, by noon on the weekday, twenty business days prior to the next scheduled meeting of the planning board would accept the, um, site and design review. So that twenty business days takes into effect, uh, a couple of days wiggle room for us to get public, public hearing notifications to the reminder and then published. And what it would mean is that the first meeting at which the planning board is discussing an application is also the public hearing, with the understanding that you can vote to extend the public hearing to another meeting. The way that it is right now, if you were to accept an application at a meeting, you should not be having any substantial conversation around that application anyway, because you haven't seen it before. So it doesn't take away anything from you.
I don't want the idea of a court being involved. I don't, I, I personally don't trust the town clerk. Um, as you said, Bruce and I had discussions about this, where things have been misfiled, mislocated. We actually had a timestamp recently where, uh, a date was actually described and changed on a document. Um, it makes much more sense to have it presented at a planning board meeting. It's already damn in concrete. We're here, we have accepted. I asked the court for data and time. Uh, I don't know why, I don't trust the court.
Well, I think we have a new, a new town clerk now, uh.
Oh, yeah, right, the one that entered the barbecue grill. I don't, I don't trust the town clerk.
It's a joke, but anyway, um.
But you're town employees and we are separately elected board, and I think we need to accept site design as a board. I don't find this thing, um, most, I think, planning boards now become, uh, subject to. I don't find this thing, um, most, I think planning boards now become uh subject to um appointed boards of city councils, of mayors. We are still a separate board, we maintain that for the minutes.
So, Chris, Bruce, Brian, do you guys have any comments on this?
Bruce, my, my, my agreeing or agreeing here, have you, have you declared on it?
Well, I, I guess, I, I don't have a problem with someone, I, I, I mean, ideally, in the past, uh people will often come before us, before, to discuss this stuff, before filing anything. Uh, I, I mean, we encourage them to do that.
That's a good point, no.
I don't particularly have a problem with, I, I mean, maybe something where they is they're going to file, so if they plan on filing uh for site design review, they have to show it to the clerk. Uh, or, or not the clerk, I, I mean, Corinne, uh, uh, you know, two weeks before filing at a, at a planning board meeting, just so we have sort of a heads off, if they, you know, don't come before us, it's got to be at a time. But, but the, the giving it to the assistant town manager would not be firing.
No, it's not the clerk.
I, I doubt that you can, I doubt that you can have two deadlines and not have the first deadline set at the clock.
You know, I do like the idea of the clerk, because, and I'm changing my thoughts here because of our new electronic filing system. We do get to see, it's better to see it filed when it was filed and get to look at it before it suddenly, Bob Bolden, like that night, showed up, or that's a legend lawsuit. Um, you know, I, I can still picture him coming here and saying, well, I'm a, I'm a resident, I'm going to file this, even though I'm not on the agenda. So I, as a resident, I can file my um site design review, that, that's how it started, it was stupid. And we let him, you know, as a resident, say, I'm filing my site design review, which was inappropriate. So the clerk there would have been our firewall, the clerk would be the firewall.
Yes, and if I could just provide some insight on what it would look like behind the scenes. So as you all know, we've been operating on some sort of hybrid model right now, where officially the rules and regulations say what they say. We've been asking people to get me applications ahead of time.
Good, do we need to fix that?
So it would look exactly the same, those applications are, almost exactly the same, those applications are currently dropped off with the building admin, who then scans them and sends them to me. This, it would be the same with the clerk, they'd be dropped off at the clerk with the check, and then they would be scanned and sent to me, so it's just literally changing the desk.
Okay, so I, 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 I will make a motion immediately, since I won't leave, uh, to, I like the idea. I mean, as presented by Corinne, uh, maybe court, the acceptance of site design review.
I don't think that would have any change.
Because that wouldn't have any protection on our legals and legal laws, well, you know, if they're out of business, the people at, at Suda's are gone.
Uh, it's because, I, I haven't seen the litigation again, but, but the bylaw itself is the issue here.
So Walter, it's the, making this change is twofold, so if we're going, so if we're going to make the motion to, you know, make those, these, accept these proposed changes. And I think I would also make a motion to delete any references to application or how we accept the application in the zoning bylaw.
We do have to, for site plan, you have to at least mention the clerk, and then you have the standards that are right, because the site plan is not a statutory process.
Okay.
You have to have a little bit of the procedure in there, but you can essentially just drag it right out of um, chapter forty eight, section nine, for the same procedural requirement for special permit. Every other zoning application and permit, the gatekeepers, the town clerk, why is site design so vulnerable, state law? They just have never chosen to uh bring it into the light.
Okay.
So just to be clear, sorry, sorry Cheryl, this would mean, with the motions that Cheryl was just discussing, this would mean that um the, the motion to recommend deleting uh those procedures uh with respect to what Attorney Hillman just said. From um site and design review, uh, sorry, from, from the sign uh bylaw and site designer, the sign regulations of the zoning bylaw and site design review. Uh, would start the zone change process, which would mean that we would then send that to the select board from the petition, which I can do at the same time.
Yeah, right, because, yeah, and that's another thing they have to send back to us, and it's something we have to advise. So would that be for the member now?
Well, so let's um, let's vote on the motion that we just talked about first, um, alright, so is there a second to the motion?
Well, when, when.
We just have the motion, the, the motion, yes. Go ahead, Chris.
When it first comes before us, I mean, right now, we go through all of the requirements for site and design review, and decide whether or not.
You don't have to.
Your is uh complete, right? What happens if it's filed and it's not complete with the, with the, with Corinne?
Yeah.
And for, for whatever reason, she says that, that works good. But then when it comes in front of us, we, wait a minute, we need the X, Y, and Z.
So then we can.
So this isn't a complete application.
Right, so I think that, right, so that lasted.
I, I can answer.
Okay.
They, so, uh, you heard me wrong, but the, that application being complete is not what starts the timeline, what starts the timeline is the filing of the application. So if the applicant has left out a chunk of that, you know, when, when the staff writes, you know, we recommend that this is complete to you, it's a recommendation to the board. So, so what we're doing is administrative, we, the staff is administrative, you're the ones who make the motion and, and vote on it being complete anyway. But, but the, the timeline starts with the time of date stamped, so if it's not complete, it's mutually advantageous to the board and.
And the applicant to get it right.
To extend the timeline to get it right, but if, if the applicant says no, we want you to have this public hearing and move this along, the board is totally within its rights to vote down.
Vote it down, yes, I agree, yeah.
So, so it's kind of, why would they do that?
I, I think it's right, I think it's a preventive litigation, I, I agree, I think that the idea of. It's fine, right, was that well done? I think it's, it's, it's really advantageous for us to let it start at that clock, and you're right, we always have a recourse. In fact, even we're, we're the only board that can rescind the decision.
I don't think it has to.
I've got a hearing yet.
Edit or rotate candy, Walter.
Oh my god, the birthday candy, or, well.
Right, so what is this motion? So, um, I will make a motion to accept the proposed revisions to the planning board rules and regulations indicating that the town clerk will accept, yeah, the application.
Cheryl, come here.
Yes, yes.
I'm not sure that language is the language you necessarily want.
Okay, what are your thoughts on language?
I, I think that, that the twenty day thing is concerning to me, because if the bylaw itself states file with the town clerk, we can't tell them when in the cycle they're going to apply, sixty five days is plenty time, well.
Right.
If this was a special permit, you're gonna have to receive them when you receive them, and you're gonna be able to get there into the decision. So I'm a little concerned about the, the twenty day thing. I think, I think what maybe we need to do, took this suggestion, um, is that maybe have Corinne and myself kind of sync these two things up with the proposal for the board for consideration. I think we discussed that we're probably not gonna make the full time meeting anyway on this.
We can make the full time meeting with the zoning petition, but that can be separated from the rules and regulations anyway, so that can happen.
Right, you can do it anytime.
So, so we can move ahead with the zoning and then work on this.
I think for the zoning, I think a, a motion could be something, Corinne correctly from wrong, to have the, the filing process and subject to writing it up, have the filing process mirror the federal permit process. And clerk, give a copy to the board, and then just go forward on, on that, on that basis from there.
Okay.
It, it might be the easiest way to approach, I mean, you can do whatever you like, but that's, that'll make it more uniform.
Okay, no, I think that that makes sense and allows us to still move forward with eventually making the change once we get to.
And I think it'll be actually pretty quick, a pretty easy change, rather than doing the rest, you can just sync up whenever, whenever you want.
Okay, so, I'll make, alright, so I'll make a motion then to um amend the zoning bylaws related to sign applications and site and design review applications to reflect the special permitting.
Is it for signs as well, is that in the process you want to track as well?
Yes, um, alright, does that make sense?
Sure.
Especially if we really want it to be EBA and not us.
No, no, it's not us, it's, we're just syncing it up, we're, we're just.
Is that the idea that making it all work, okay, that's.
Yeah, just so that there's one timeline, but variants that are different.
Right, it's very well, yeah, yeah.
Um, are you suggesting that Corinne change the language to, so I think earlier in the meeting we talked about, change the language to indicate that the application would be accepted by the town clerk, just kind of stating that, okay, not stating that it would be pursuant to a special permitting.
No, no, not at all, just that we're gonna, we're gonna pull similar language out, that's the, the job to do.
Okay.
Is to, to pull it out, so that it'll, it'll look very much like it, it'll say site and design review. We're not converting it to something else, it's just.
Well, we'd like to have, are you filing maybe?
I think I'm comfortable if everyone else is with just making that change to the zoning bylaw, and then Jay and Corinne are gonna get together on this language, and we'll talk about it at the next meeting.
Roll paper and you will get.
Might have a special time meeting.
Okay, yeah, I, I think it will allow us to move forward with the updates and the rights much quicker, so. And this has been coming up a lot, so I feel like it would be good to just get this done.
We're thinking that the planning board should be this uh special program authority for.
I think that might be a little weightier for this, for typing, I want to look back, that's my goal.
From town meeting, Walter.
That's my goal, I am a little bit for twenty years.
Okay, is there a second to that really long winded motion?
Can I bring it back to you?
Yeah, sure.
I have it recorded here, okay. So, um, motion to revise references to accepting sign applications and site and design review applications within the zoning bylaws, reflect that they will be accepted by the town clerk, filing with the town clerk, yeah, filing with the town clerk.
The town clerk, how, how would you?
The town clerk will, will board them to me, but it's like, would they just drop it off with the town clerk and then?
The town clerk is like the universal acceptance of all time in the world, September twenty ninth.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll say.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call vote, Walter?
Yes.
Chris, Bruce, Brian, Cheryl, yes. Okay, so then I, I think we also need to vote to spend the um petition on this zoning bylaw revision to the select board.
It should be automatic, but uh, motion to um, to present this to the select board.
Okay, is there a second? Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Walter?
Yeah.
Bruce, Bruce, Brian, Cheryl, yes. And if everyone agrees, um, why don't you go ahead and set the public hearing date for October four?
I will make a motion, man, public hearing, October four.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Walter?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Cheryl, yes. Okay, so hopefully we can get those two things on for the full time meeting.
If you can turn that side tonight, I turn myself. I have, I have a nice tune on, getting hungry over at Posta, getting hungry.
I, um, oh, are someone waiting for you for dinner?
Yeah, someone, I'm a random just off the streets, I think five, no, my wife, she's sitting over at Posta waiting.
Okay, yeah, I mean.
Do you need anything?
Um.
Please, get out of here.
Alright, uh, we're making a motion to.
And Walter left at eight forty five.
Yes, make a note, Walter, I'm sorry, thank you, but.
Well, before you leave, Walter, there is planning board member comments that I guess I will jump ahead to, happy birthday.
Thank you, and you know what, I'm, I'm on a new drug today, so my life feels a lot better.
I'm good.
Glarian or something, Glare, have you ever heard that?
No.
Old people.
Alright, well, enjoy your birthday dinner, Walter.
Thank you, I'm lucky, it's only just across the street, so.
Yes, okay.
As always, a, a meeting, I'm not gonna miss anything, but let me know.
Okay.
Oh, my records.
Yeah.
Kind of make it controversial afterward, um. But someone, yeah, nice. Yeah, alright.
Okay, we'll see.
I'll open for on notes, I mean, obviously it was pretty simple on the site and design waiver, and, and the sign is really easy, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a stab at drafting these in some more.
Yeah, I always expect it tomorrow.
There you go, and you won't get it. Okay, enjoy your birthday dinner.
You know, this will.
Um, okay, moving on to other business.
Thanks, good.
Our long range plan update, uh, our long range plan update is that the next meeting of the steering committee is September eleven, this coming Monday, I believe. Um, oh, at the adult center.
What is that, I'm sorry, say that again, it should be eleven.
Steering committee meeting.
I want to go, I don't want to go to that, it's only eleven?
Yeah.
What time?
Seven, at seven, hybrid and personal, at the adult center in the conference room.
Yeah.
Um, the uh staff, we, uh, wrapped up comments on the draft, um, I don't, I don't think I said this on the listening, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting myself, on the draft uh inventory and analysis, which is essentially the same condition, there's no strategies or any recommending stuff in there. And um the consultants are incorporating those comments, and then they will make the um drafts open to the public to, for comments. So that will include boards and committees and also members of the public who are just in making comments, so I'll be in touch when that has happened. Um, the uh, do you want to provide an update on the ARP, uh, age friendly task force?
I can speak to it, um, and I, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
So as part of the long range plan, there is the uh age friendly component that we've been working on um with the AARP, and they have had several listening sessions now. I don't know that the listening sessions that we've had to date have been super well attended, I know that they have, you know, grown over an audience. Um, I think there's one more left, uh, two more, they're, they're feeling an additional one, oh, good, okay, yeah. Um, so we'll see, you know, what information comes out of those. Um, if, uh, and I would add on to that, the town submitted the, the official application to AARP to become an age friendly community, and um AARP accepted the application, which still means we have to go through the whole process and finally be approved, but we are officially within the um age friendly uh uh certification process at this point, um, any other updates on that?
What, what exactly does that mean?
The. Yeah, so the, it's a network of um like peer to peer communities that provide uh uh, like, I don't know if technical support is the right word. Uh, AARP provides technical support to the municipalities, and the municipalities themselves provide learning opportunities with one another um uh as to how to become more age friendly, and so what age friendly means in this particular program is um incorporating uh considerations of um aging in place in all the different ways we're going to be, in terms of access to housing and affordable housing, but also in planning sidewalks, walking routes. Uh, you know, mobility friendly, what does public transportation look like, et cetera, um, and uh, um. Sorry, I forget how I started that sentence, uh, but, uh, it's hard to think and talk at the same time, but um the AARP provides technical assistance to communities who are looking to make improvements in those areas, and we have to show that we have met certain criteria um to uh to become age friendly certified, and that we continue to improve in that area. Um, with the understanding that age friendly for anyone sixty five and older is also age friendly for those who are very young, um, with similar mobility needs, et cetera. Um, so, uh, that's the program in a nutshell.
Well, I mean, I assume there's no penalty if for some reason AARP felt we weren't compliant with something.
There's no penalty, thi- this was a um goal set by the select board actually a decade ago, maybe. Um, and uh it was something that we included in our long range plan um grant application um to show that we were being inclusive of all, uh, you know, we were doing an equitable plan that was inclusive of all members of the long, um, public. Uh, that, so even if we were to fail in our AARP certification, which we are absolutely trying to achieve. Um, there's no penalty per se, um, but it's a goal that the town has set for itself, uh, both from the select board side and then also from the planning board side. Um, when they endorsed the grant application scope as such, so it's a, it, it's a goal.
What do you say, grant application, is town actually getting funding for this?
The, I'm, I'm referring to the grant application to fund the long range plan, so that was the end goal grant. But yes, um, there are grant programs that are open for um age friendly communities and or you score better on some grant programs if you are an age friendly community. I'm not so familiar with what those are, this isn't my area of um expertise, and we're having to explain, lead us through this. Um, but yes, there, there is a funding available.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hey, I don't want to keep you, I know you have a long, a long ride, so if you.
I'm, I'm interested in hearing this, I mean, I, I mean, if it's gonna go another hour, but no. But no.
Yeah, okay. Um, I think that's good for the long-range current update. Do you have any other comments generally?
Uh, from the planning comments, um I will remind everyone that um oh, I'm forgetting the date. Warrant articles are due in September, but citizen petitions are due earlier, September twenty-second. Um, so if you know anyone who's planning on submitting one, um or uh warrant article in general, those are the deadlines. The um select board, I believe that the first meeting, which they will review a draft warrant in, is October um, I'm forgetting what the Mondays are in October, um but it's the uh would be October fourth, uh sixteenth, I believe, and I believe that's.
Yeah, that's that's one day.
Yep, and then um the thirtieth would be when they uh are, I don't know, there's some still. Why is that? Is that a holiday? Um.
What, Halloween?
Yeah, I don't know. The the subsequent select board meeting, I don't know why it's not on the town calendar, um would be when they uh likely votes to set the warrant, and that's to make sure that they meet the um publishing uh timelines for the getting the warrants out to everybody's houses. Um, so uh that's what we'll know more about once that town meeting. Um, I think that's the only other update I have right now.
Okay. Uh, we didn't receive any correspondence, and I don't hear any announcements unless anyone has any. Any planning board member comments? Jay, do you have any comments?
No, just working through stuff. Talked about a few things today, including the agenda items today and.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you for being here.
At the select board finally last night.
I know. That was an eleven p.m. meeting, so we're nothing right now.
Yeah, they felt bad. If I knew that it was gonna go that late, I probably would have booked a hotel.
Yeah.
But.
Oh, gosh. Well, thank you for your time here and um and Western Mass about a couple of nights. Um, any comments from our visitors? I know we have a few folks left online. No. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
One second. Well, I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you.